I just want to do a sound check. If someone can just let me know if you folks can hear me loud and clear in the chat bar, that would be greatly appreciated. Awesome, thank you. So, good afternoon and welcome to this webinar entitled Connecting the Dots for Joint Health and Safety Committees and Health and Safety Representatives in the school board and university sector. My name is Felicia Forbes, QP National's Health and Safety Representative, and I'm also joined by Paul Sylvester, another National Health and Safety Representative. If you have any questions... Sorry, before I get there, a reminder that this presentation will be recorded and posted on the QP Ontario COVID-19 website, so you can find it there available for you folks definitely by next week. If you have any questions throughout our presentation, please post it in the chat bar and we will try our best to answer as many questions as we can before 60 minutes is up today. Please ensure that your questions are general of nature and are not workplace-specific. As mentioned, the theme of this webinar is Connecting the Dots. Although the COVID-19 pandemic has had a profound impact on our workers, it is important to remember that the law and principles of health and safety remain the same. The presentation today will serve as a reminder of what are the minimum standards in the Health and Safety Act and how to ensure that the workplace is implementing measures that will protect workers from exposure to COVID-19. So, the workshop will cover these topics today. Internal responsibility system, duties of an employer, a supervisor and worker under the Occupational Health and Safety Act, powers and duties of the Joint Health and Safety Committee and Health and Safety Representatives under the Act, due diligence and how it relates to the General Duty Clause, and the precautionary principle, hierarchy of control, and COVID-19 is a hazard in the workplace. So now I'm going to turn it over to Paul and he's going to take us through the internal responsibility system.
Thanks, Felicia. So, welcome this afternoon, and the first thing we're going to be talking about is the internal responsibility system. And we really want to stress that if there was a time when Joint Health and Safety Committees were valuable, it is during this particular time with COVID-19 and a lot of the uncertainties that are facing especially your sectors, whether it's the school board or the university sector. So you might have heard of the responsibility, internal responsibility system, but we're just going to review a lot of what that means and how it's going to apply to your committees and going forward and trying to assess the hazards of COVID-19. And it's important to remember that COVID-19 or the virus, SARS-CoV-2, is another hazard in the workplace. And while it is a complex hazard to control, we have to remember those basic principles that are in the Act, what our rights and our duties are as Joint Health and Safety Committee members, and looking at how we can properly assess the hazards to try and come to some solutions so that workers aren't impacted by exposure to the disease. So, the internal responsibility system is a framework on which the Occupational Health and Safety Act is built, and the philosophy behind it is that workers and employers, they share a responsibility to ensure that the workplace is safe. Now, as we're going to learn, the employers share a bulk of that responsibility, in fact, they do share the majority of that responsibility to ensure a safe workplace. However, workers belong to the system in the sense that they can participate on workplace committees and that they have certain duties like making sure supervisors are aware of hazards within the workplace if they're not aware of what they are, and we're going to go over a few of those duties as we go along. So at any time, either the workers or employers can access the Ministry of Labor for enforcement reasons or to ensure compliance with the Act. For the internal responsibility system to be effective, employers, supervisors, workers, and other workplace parties need to have practical knowledge, training, and skills to control workplace hazards. Later on, we're going to be talking about the difference of what, you know, control is and what managing a hazard. So, we want to control the hazard either at the source, along the path, or at the worker. And when we say manage workplace hazard, what that means is we're going to leave the hazards in place and then work, we'll have to work around the hazards. We don't want to manage the hazards, we want to ensure that they're properly controlled. A component of the internal responsibility system is a functioning committee that is identifying hazards and making recommendations to improve workplace conditions with the goal of preventing accidents, illness, and lost time injuries. So, the question I have for you right now is, like, do you have a functioning committee? And even though the, a lot of our workplaces are not as occupied as they once were, are you still having regular meetings? Are you still having inspections? Is there still a functioning committee that is going on? So, the, and when I ask is, are you still meeting that mandate of improving workplace conditions and preventing accidents, illness, and lost time injuries? So, if any of the workplace parties is not fulfilling their duty, then the IRS is not So now I'm going to turn it over to Felicia and we're just going to go over a few of the duties of persons under the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And included with your invitation to today's webinar were two sheets, and those sheets kind of outline what is the employer's responsibility towards the Joint Health and Safety Committee and what are some of our rights, powers, and duties as members of Joint Health and Safety Committees. So after the presentation, you can just review those because we're just going to talk about the basic principles of what they are and how they're going to be, how we can apply them going forward with COVID-19. So, back to you, Felicia.
Thanks, Paul. So, as Paul said, we're just going to go over a few of the duties that the employer, supervisor, and worker has. The employer does have more duties under the Occupational Health and Safety Act under Section 25 and 26. But for the purposes of you folks to do the important work that you're going to do going back into a lot of the workplaces that are reopening, once they do and preparing for that, we wanted to highlight these specific clauses in the legislation that are very meaningful and impactful for you folks to use as a resource and to rely on. So, the employer needs to ensure that prescribed protective equipment, materials, and devices are provided in good condition and used in the workplace. Okay? You folks are both covered under the Industrial Regulations Act, and when we're talking about good condition, obviously we want to make sure that it's not damaged, that it's taken care of, it fits appropriately, and it's appropriate given the circumstances, right? Similarly, the materials and the devices that you're using as well. The employer needs to ensure that measures, procedures, and training are prescribed are carried out in the workplace. So not only are you folks going to sit down with your employers and look at some procedures that are going to develop into measures and of that sort, and possibly some possible trainings or refreshers that you folks need, but ensuring that the employer is carrying out that in the workplace and it's not just print on a piece of paper. Providing training and information about the hazards of the work, so really understanding what is COVID-19, what are the hazards that are associated with it, what are the symptoms of it, how can it be, how can we reduce shedding, how can it be transmitted, things of that sort, and then including training to make sure that the exposure and the level of risk of the exposure is reduced significantly or isolated and controlled by using the hierarchy of control that Paul's going to touch upon later. Appointing supervisors who are A) familiar with the work, be aware of the hazards in the workplace, and C) familiar with the Act. So it's not only the employer that has to do all these things, but the, who the employer appoints must be acquainted and familiar with these things as they've listed. Prepare written policies for occupational health and safety, violence and hazard, sorry, not hazard, and harassment, and develop programs to implement those policies. And these policies could be things like a pandemic plan that we, that would be anticipated and expected once you folks are reopening to see what does that look like. You might call it a return to work plan as well, but looking at how the safety is going to look and what the employer is going to do in order to develop those programs with those policies. Afford assistance and cooperation to Health and Safety Representatives or committee in carrying out their duties and rights under the Act. So, not fully ignoring you folks, allowing you folks to do your powers and your functions as you should under the Act and not getting in the way of that, but rather working collaboratively in order to push the very important agenda of protecting the health and safety of our workers, especially during this time. And providing Health and Safety Representatives or committees the results of reports respecting occupational health and safety that is in the employer's possession. This is important, which we will note on the next slide, of certain notices that the Health and Safety Committee and/or the Health and Safety Representative should be getting. Reports can look like anything of an incident report, accident report, it could be talks or exposure reports, WSIB reports, there might be other reports that are pertaining to health and safety that's in the employer's possession related to COVID or related to any other hazard that you folks should, should be, the employer should be forwarding that to you to let you know the results. So that way you folks can be able to assess it and try and put in control measures to either avoid it from happening or to reduce the likelihood of it reoccurring in the future. Notice of accidents, incidents, or workplace violence and occupational illness. So as I mentioned just a few moments ago, the employer has to provide a written notice to the Health and Safety Representative and/or the Health and Safety Committee and the union in the event of an accident or incident of the workplace violence that requires medical attention or disables a worker from their usual work, a worker who has suffered an occupational illness, or has filed a claim of occupational illness with WSIB. And this notice must be received in four days from the occurrence. So we really do want to hit home this point as well in terms of one of the requirements that the employer has under the Act. You folks, if you haven't heard or seen, you will see that we are encouraging folks when you are going, going back into your workplaces or if you've been entering into the redeployment piece as well, so that might apply, that you folks are receiving these types of notices, and we are encouraging you to fill out talks or exposure forms that you can be found on the WSIB website, and filling out a WFSIB claim if you feel that you've incurred the illness. And just for clarity, regardless if the claim is approved or not, the committee is still to receive this notice within four days of the occurrence. Duties of a supervisor. Again, not all of their obligations under the Act, but we just wanted to highlight some key ones for you folks today. So this can be found under Section 27 of the Act. The supervisors must work in compliance with the Act and the regulation. They have to ensure that workers wear protective equipment that's required by the employer to be worn. They have to ensure that the safety measures and procedures that I mentioned before that the employer is supposed to implement is established by that employer and/or by the regulation that are carried out in the workplace. So they too have to make sure that you folks are working in a safe manner with those measures and procedures that they've developed and established and hopes consulted the Joint Health and Safety Committee with or rep with. And acquaint any worker with hazards in the workplace to which they are aware of, and this will be very important for you folks, especially once going back into the workplace, to really be aware of what COVID-19 is, because as Paul says, it's another hazard that has presented itself in our workplace. And that's really what we want to stress home with you folks to turn your minds to. And duties of the worker. So this can be found under Section 28. So, workers have to work in compliance with the Act and the regulation as well. They have to use or wear equipment, protective devices, or clothing that the employer requires to be worn or used. And we just want to note for you folks that use or wear equipment, protective devices, or clothing that is, that is providing you safety and protecting you, right? Not something that is damaged, defaulted, not in good condition, or creates another hazard for you. So we just want to stress that that's very clear. Report to the supervisor the absence of any protective device, any defective equipment, or any contravene of the Act that is likely to endanger a worker. So being vocal if you do see any contravene of the Act, and that's why it's so important to understand duties and things of the Act, especially when it comes, because you guys are Joint Health and Safety Committee Representatives or committee members, so you folks can follow this duty as well. Not remove or make ineffective protective device or operate any equipment, device, or machinery that endangers themselves or another worker. Now, Paul's going to dive into our Joint Health and Safety Committee and Health and Safety Representatives, powers and rights and functions under the Act, and how you folks can go into your workplaces and rely on these things in order to really insert yourself and make sure that the employer and the supervisors are doing their duties under the Act by allowing for you folks to access your powers. Over to you, Paul.
Thanks, Felicia. So we're just going to quickly just remind ourselves of the difference between a Health and Safety Committee and a Health and Safety Representative, because we have a bit of a mix in some, in some school boards, some workplaces might actually have Health and Safety Representatives and they will not have committees, but we're just going to go through the items. So, a Health and Safety Representative is required at a workplace where between five and 19 workers are regularly employed, and their functions and powers are listed in Section 8 of the Act. A Joint Health and Safety Committee is required at workplaces where 20 or more workers are regularly employed, and you'll find the bulk of the functions and powers of a committee in Section 9. But both the Health and Safety Representative and the Joint Health and Safety Committee have similar powers and functions under the Act, except for meetings. If you're a Health and Safety Representative as under Section 8, you don't meet with the employer, but you still have the same powers and duties and functions. The roles of a Joint Health and Safety Committee and the Health and Safety Representative are the same, is that these are the key principles of what they're, what they're required to do, is to identify situations or conditions that are a hazard to workers. They have the right to obtain information from an employer concerning the hazards, processes, and equipment, and the power to make recommendations to improve, approve workplace conditions. So this should be a constant thing. This should be the mantra of your committee, or if you're a representative, is that this is continual, it is non-stop, and there's that joint engagement, and there's that internal responsibility system that is functioning to ensure that all three of these criteres are being met at all times. We're just quickly going to touch on, because some of you belong to multi-site committees and some of you have single-site committees, so we're going to talk briefly about what a multi-site is, and it's, where so permitted, a multi-site committee can maybe establish by the Ministry of Labor if they approve it. In this case, you would have one committee that can be established for several workplaces under the same employer instead of single committees at each site. Regardless, the multi-site committee members have the same rights and duties of a regular Joint Safety Committee member, except that if you have a multi-site, you must have terms of reference that are signed by both parties and approved by the Ministry of Labor. And those terms of reference would set out items that are not necessarily set out in the Act, such as, you know, quorum, or who's going to do the minutes, or, you know, how often you're going to have special meetings or guests, things of that nature. Now, if you have single-site committees, terms of reference are not, it's not obligated. However, it is important to have within that committee some kind of health and safety agreement that will set out the ground rules of how you're going to go about achieving the functions of the committee and how you're going to be able to maintain that, those objectives of identifying hazards and obtaining information and making recommendations. One of the key functions of a committee member is to perform inspections. So every workplace shall be inspected by designated worker, designated worker member of the committee every month, and annual inspections are allowed only with ministry approval, and there might be some terms of reference out there that speak to annual inspections, but the importance here is that we ensure that the workplace is inspected at least once a month. The Act says that you inspect the physical condition of the workplace, however, that can be interpreted very broadly to say that there's nothing wrong with you, with a worker talking with, with, during an inspection, asking workers if they've encountered any hazards, or not looking necessarily at the physical things of the workplace, that you want to look through the safety data sheets to ensure that you have all the safety data sheets for every particular chemical or biological product that you have in the workplace, or if you want to check the Health and Safety Board to ensure that all the prescribed material is up there. So just don't limit yourself to the physical nature of the workplace. A management representative of the committee may accompany the worker representative during the inspection, however, it's important to remember that the inspection is the worker's inspection. So maybe you have in your terms of reference or your health and safety agreement that a management representative will accompany you during your inspections, and as long as we, you know, we learned earlier that the employer is supposed to afford assistance and cooperation to a committee member in exercising their duties. Well, if they're there and they're supporting you and they're very interested in being a part of identifying the hazards, that's, that's a good thing. However, if they're there to argue with you about, you know, whatever, what a hazard is, or what isn't a hazard, or what goes on the inspection forum, or, you know, don't write that down, I'll take care of that, or things of that nature, then that's not really affording assistance or cooperation, that's something we really don't want. So, just remember that it is the worker's inspection and not a necessarily a joint inspection. Meetings. So the committee must meet at least quarterly, every three months is what the Act says. You might be meeting more often, and that is good because we want to ensure that we're rising above the minimum standards of the Act at all times. This is, meetings have no fixed time limit. I often hear from committees to say that, you know, we meet every three months and we're only given two hours to have our meeting. Well, I don't necessarily buy that. If you have an agenda, it is important to get through the entire agenda of the meeting so that you're able to ensure that you're meeting the functions of the, of the committee. If you're done in two, if they say it's only two hours and you're not through the agenda, I'd be asking, well, when are we going to continue this meeting because our meeting really has not finished? And that comes back to the whole idea of the internal responsibility system and that committee to ensure that it is functioning and that you're actually solving workplace conditions and improving them. And you can't be doing that if you're just under a time limit. So, quorum is not necessarily established in the Act, it's usually established by terms of reference or in a health and safety agreement, you won't find it in the Act, but it's important to remember that at no time will the number of management representatives exceed the number of worker representatives on the committee. Minutes must be taken and conserved for inspector review, ensure that they're good minutes and that they provide a good idea of what the discussion was. Voting is not recommended because we believe that issues should be resolved through consensus. And the idea here is that if you have voting, it's okay if, but the idea is, what we want to impress upon you is to try and build some kind of committee consensus so that you're all on the same page, so that it promotes health and safety much more fluidly throughout the workplace. If there is a, if there is a unanimous or consensus within the committee that workplace conditions must improve and must change and hazards must be controlled, you'll have a better success at gaining those changes with the employer. Co-chairs. So every committee shall have two co-chairs, one co-chair from management selected by management and one co-chair, co-chair from workers selected by workers on the committee. Co-chair duties are not really spelled out in the Act, but they include chair meetings in alternates, prepare the agenda, sign the minutes of the meetings, and they approve guests to attend the meetings. Here's an important notice that the Act says that either co-chair has the power to put forth a recommendation if the committee has in good faith failed to achieve consensus on a recommendation. So if you bring a particular issue before the committee, you, you want to make sure that there's a recommendation that gets signed to this issue, you need to have a good discussion about the issue, but if you feel as if the employer is not going to sign off on the recommendation, the worker-co-chair can in fact advance that recommendation to the employer. Let's talk about recommendations, and attached with your invitation to today's webinar was a sample recommendation, so that if you have never put forth a recommendation from your committee, we've provided a sample, a sample one where all you have to do is kind of just insert the issue or in suit the contravention of the Act that you believe is being contravened, and what is the remedy that you want to see that come out of this recommendation and what the timetable is for that. So, so I'll just go over the bullet points here, is that a Joint Health and Safety Committee or Health and Safety Representative has the power to put forth recommendations to the employer, and employer who receives a recommendation has 21 days to respond. The response must include a timetable to implement the recommendation, or if it's refused, the employer is required to provide an explanation justifying the rejection of the recommendation. That's very important because based on that response, you can either bring it back to the committee, or you can advance the recommendation that was rejected to the Ministry of Labor if you feel as if that there is a outstanding issue, or there is no contravention, there is in fact a contravention of the Act that is happening and that the employer is not meeting their obligation. And as mentioned in the previous slide, either co-chair has the power to put forth a recommendation unilaterally if having brought the topic to the committee in good faith failed to achieve consensus. Very important here is that there is no obstruction of the committee. So no person shall hinder, impede, or interfere a committee member in the exercise of a power or performance of a duty under the Act. And no person shall provide false information to a committee member in the exercise of a power or performance of a duty under the Act, and you can find that in Section 62. This is very important because we want the committee to work apart from any outside or undue influence, and we don't want, and we talked earlier about the committee getting that kind of information, we talked about reports and notices and things of that nature. We want to ensure that the committee has provided all the information that is out there and making sure that it is accurate so that they can make the proper determinations if, if recommendations need to be put forth. This is very important, and it's something that should always be reminded, so just highlight that section if it ever comes to an issue, and if you want, you can, if you feel as if there's been some obstruction of your committee, you can make your complaint to the Ministry of Labor on that, or you can file a grievance. So right now, we're going to turn it over to Felicia who's going to go over the General Duty Clause and what is the idea of due diligence as we go forward in COVID-19. We're going to be asking ourselves, is the employer meeting their due diligence?
Thanks, Paul. Did I mute myself there? So, the General Duty Clause, we're going to start there, 252H. So, this can be applied when there's no regulation that exists, but the reasonable care to protect a worker does exist. For example, ergonomic-related injuries are leading cases of WSIB claims, right? So, if there, there is currently no legislation or regulation to enforce an employer's responsibility to ensure ergonomically safe workstations or how you do your work in that way, but the MLL has adopted standards from Canada and the US to measure the impact of these tasks and loads on the human body. However, these, these are merely just standards, sorry, these are merely just guidelines that these standards that I'm referring to. So, the guidelines cannot be enforced, however, inspectors can write orders under 252H, and that's why this specific clause is so, so important for you folks to use and really try to be creative in making an argument when there is no specific legislation or regulation that you can point to. The General Duty Clause is a broad responsibility of the employers and supervisors to ensure the health and safety of a worker as well as other workers at or near the workplace that can be impacted by the employer's operations. So, in the Ontario Health and Safety Act, 252H reads, "An employer shall take every precaution reasonable in the circumstances to protect the worker." Similarly, in 272C, the supervisor has that, that obligation as well. Similarly, in 272C, the supervisor has that that obligation as well. Due diligence. So when we talk about due diligence, this means that the employer or supervisor has the duty to take every precaution reasonable in the circumstances to avoid both harm and offense of the Occupational Health and Safety Act and the regulation. The exercise of due diligence should be done before anything happens. Okay, so being proactive, not reactive, right? Not waiting until something happens, but doing it before and planning and and doing those pieces that we're going to talk, we have talked about and will further talk about today of how to make sure that the employer means their due diligence. It cannot be considered due diligence if the health and safety measures are implemented after an incident, accident, injury or occupational illness occurs. So the importance of identifying and equating a worker with all the hazards and source of the potential danger is the very first step that an employer needs to meet in order to establish their due diligence. And then there's several criterias and conditions that that flesh out after that that will include, but not limited to written policies, they must provide training and education. They must make sure, as I said, you folks are adequate with the hazard, that they observe other pieces of legislation and regulations and making sure that that's incorporated and highlighted. That they should have some type of system like an accident or or investigation system and an inspection system, proper documentation and various things like that. Okay? Telling workers to act safe in the workplace will not keep workers free from harm if the harm still exists. Workers may make mistakes, they do make mistakes, we all are human, right? But if proper controls are put in place and the impacts of exposure to the hazard, injury or illness will be less serious. And to ensure the compliance of 252H, all hazards and risk of the workplace must be identified, assessed and controlled. And we are going to go through, again, like I said, the hierarchies of control and and a very key that valuable principle that that Paul's going to take us through in order for us to hold the employer to that compliance piece. The precautionary principle. So the precautionary principle is what it means is that the prudent action in the face of potential serious risk without waiting for the completion of further scientific research. So doing best practices before something terrible happens, you know, being proactive, not having to not having to having to say, let's be safe rather than being sorry, right? Is the whole mythology around this principle. So there was a quote that was that we we posted here, as you folks can see, those that are following along with the webinar that I'm just going to take you through that was from 2013. And we are basically repeating what's happening. This is from the SARS Commission. "The point is not who is right and who is wrong about airborne transmission. The point is not science, but safety. Scientific knowledge changes constantly. When it comes to worker safety in hospitals, we should not be driven by the scientific dogma of yesterday or even the scientific dogma of today. We should be driven by precautionary principles that reasonable steps to reduce risk should not await scientific certainty. Until the precautionary principle is fully recognized, mandated and enforced in Ontario, workers will continue to be at risk." And now I'm going to turn it back over to Paul to talk about controlling hazards.
Thanks, Felicia. So now that we've kind of, you know, we've we've connected a few dots as it pertains to legislation and ideas of around precautionary principles and the general duty clause. It's now to really start to look at the hazard of COVID-19. So when we talk about hazards, you have to remind ourselves that a hazard is any source of potential damage, harm or adverse health effects on something or someone. And to protect workers from exposure to hazards, they must be first identified, properly assessed and adequately controlled. So the the effect to effectively control a hazard, it is important to understand the hazard itself. So the most common way is through a hazard assessment using the RACE principle. So it's R A C E. So we have R for recognize, A for assess, C for control and E for evaluate. Now, when we talk about recognize and we're going to, we're going to focus on COVID-19, but this particular assessment can apply to any hazard in the workplace. So we talk about recognize, we want to identify the hazards in the workplace. And the way we identify it is usually through inspections. We can do that through surveys. We can do it through hazard mapping, accident reports, if we notice that there's an uptick in accidents or near miss reports, test results or how we observe the workers in the workplace is how we can identify and recognize hazards in the workplace. So the second step is assess. So we learn everything about the hazard. We learn about its source, its modes of transmission, how it affects the human body. If any special training is required to work with this hazard, are there any policies or procedures that exist? Does it need to be modified? What does the current regulations say? Is there something in the Act that speaks to the hazard? Is there research out there that provides us an idea of quality research out there that provides us with accurate information about the hazard? And we have to ask ourselves, how many people would be in the workplace would be affected by this hazard? What are the best practices out there? And how the hazard will affect workers so we don't leave any other workers vulnerable? Once we get to control, that's when we start applying, when we've learned everything about the hazard, when we get to control is actually applying measures so that there are overlapping measures of control in place to protect the worker. And is we always start the hierarchy of controls at the source, then along the path, and then finally at the worker. And after we've applied our control, we have to evaluate to determine whether the control that has been put in place, that has been recommended or that the employer put in place is continuing to protect workers, make sure that they're free from injury and illness. So if we notice that there are as there's an uptick in accidents or there's still exposures happening to this to this to this hazard, we need to start the process over again and recognize and assess and control it again. So it's a continual cycle. When is a hazard assessment required? Is required before any new workplace policies, programs, processes or activities are introduced? Before changes are introduced to existing policies, programs, processes or activities, including when products, machinery, tools and equipments change? And when hazards are identified or new information becomes available about existing hazards? So in terms of COVID-19, we have a lot of it here is that it's a new hazard. We're going to have new policies that are going to have to be written. We have existing policies that are going to have to be redrafted. And we have new information is always coming out. So we just can't rest on what we know so far. And we always have to apply the precautionary principle to ensure that we're always thinking ahead and that we're not going to rely just on what we what we think we know or what the government is telling us. We're going to try and push to make sure that the employer is compliant with that general duty clause. Where is a hazard assessment required is where a worker is likely to be exposed to the hazard and where that exposure is likely to cause injury or illness. So this is something I'm sure most of you have seen before. The hierarchy of controls and all occupational health and safety hazards can be controlled using the hierarchy of controls. The most effective way to control a hazard is at the source through elimination or substitution. If it is impossible to control the hazard at the source, the next step is along the path using engineering or administrative controls. And the next step is at the work using, is at the worker using personal protective equipment. And this is the least desirable manner to control a hazard. Now, there is not necessarily one control that could be put in place. And that's what I meant earlier when I talked about overlapping controls. And a lot of discussions that have been happening the last, you know, two, three months around COVID-19 have been about things like respirators and personal protective equipment. But as you will notice in the in the diagram, PPE is the least effective means of controlling that hazard. We want, we want, we hopefully that you're going to glean from today's webinar is we want you to start thinking about engineering and administrative controls first. And make sure that you put as many engineering and administrative controls in place so that this whole debate about whether or not there is appropriate PPE is is a is an afterthought. Because if you are, if you're providing care to someone who has COVID-19, it is essential that you do wear the protective equipment. But there are other things that we could put in place to ensure that if that exposure is going to happen, that you're just not wearing PPE. So I'm going to turn it over to Felicia now. We're just going to go through the R A C E of the of the assessment. And we're going to apply it to COVID-19 and just start thinking about how we can, how we can apply this in our own workplaces.
Okay, so starting with R, we need to recognize, right? So we're going to start by identifying, or you folks actually are going to go back into your workplaces and start by identifying what are the hazards of COVID-19? And where are the risks of exposure? And this can look like identifying situations that may be unhealthy or unsafe for workers and identifying effective systems for responding to those situations, right? You want to look at, are there any improvements in identifying improvements within the workplace environment to promote health and safety of the workers during COVID-19? Well, actually, always really, but for the purposes of today. Identifying programs and policies that you folks may have, so reviewing those which we're going to get to when it comes to assessing, but identifying what those look like and where those are. So when you you have them ready for the next letter. Monthly inspections. So going and looking at your monthly inspections, doing a monthly inspection before you get back into your workplace is what we are recommending. Surveys, you could survey the membership if need be to identify and understand the work that they do to try and recognize where that potential risk of exposure may come up that maybe is not neatly written down on a job description, for example. Looking at floor plans. So floor plans that will be able for you folks to look at exits and entry points, how many washrooms around the building, who are going to use those washrooms? Or how are we going to 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 control that piece? How many folks are in certain parts of the building? Not only with workers, but potentially when families come in or childrens come in or other students as well. Looking at any potential exposure reports that come in, accidents and illness notices that come in. Identifying workers and tasks that would be likely to exposure. So really looking and identifying the work that folks do and looking at how the flow of the of the tasks that those folks do would expose them to COVID-19. Now we get to the identify, sorry, the assessment piece. So reviewing, as I said, new or existing policies, protocols, training programs that are related to infection prevention and control, which we also call IPAC of COVID-19. Putting in pandemic plans if one hasn't been developed because most of you folks have been closed, but developing those, making sure that they're regularly updated and ongoing. And is it going to protect the workers, right? Looking at infection control plans and have they been updated to 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 reflect COVID-19? I think all workplaces should have infection control plans. I think there is always a likelihood of a biological hazard entering into the workplace and there should or keeping, trying to keep them out, period. So looking at that particular plan and seeing, does it, does it include other best practices that have worked for you folks? Or are there any gaps that you've seen has not worked or has failed in the past that you folks can update in order to implement and implement effective control plans to 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 prevent from the hazard of COVID-19? Measures and procedures to protect workers from exposure. Paul's going to go through that a bit more, but trying to assess and look at what are certain things, maybe the way that parents pick up children or the way that bus drivers may lay out or their route of picking up children, dropping up children, spaces of childrens on the bus may need to be relooked at in order to protect workers from exposure to COVID-19. Training, all workers should be familiar with routine practices and additional precautions to avoid COVID-19. So refreshers need to probably made an orientation would probably be definitely needed because it has been some time since most of you folks have been out of your workplace and a fracture never hurts anyone. And then looking at any additional precautions that could be added to to the training that's existing or gaps that need to be added to the training model for you folks in terms of reducing and avoiding the exposure to COVID-19. Personal protective equipment. So looking at and assessing, is it required? Where is it required? Which which classifications may need to be required more than others? Is it fit tested? Is that required depending on the PPE? You always want PPE to fit appropriately, of course, but there are certain types of testing guidelines that some do require. Reviewing training records to see when it was last that folks were trained on the uses of PPE and different types of PPE. Does it include all the types of PPE that you folks may recommend as the last resort, as Paul said earlier? And looking at the supply that you have in in the workplace currently. Then assessing any legislation that's out there. So what are, what does the Act say and what does do the regulations say? And how do you folks achieve compliance and ensure that the employer and supervisors are are achieving that compliance in the Act as well? I would also add in there that we've been also saying is thinking creative and trying to be outside of the pot, looking outside of the box. So assessing the tools that QB National has put out around health and safety, QB Ontario site has on health and safety, looking at guidelines, keeping in mind some are bare minimum, but some does have some good things in there that may work for your workplace in terms of doing the work and limiting that exposure to to the workers of COVID-19. And now Paul's going to take us through the last two letters of the RACE principle.
Yeah, so the we're going to start with elimination. It's not really up on the slide, but because the idea of eliminating biological hazards like COVID-19 is is at this point virtually impossible. However, we can think of elimination in terms of identifying if there are workers either in school boards, universities, you you have workers that still can do the work from a distance. And the employer should be identifying that those workers, unless they absolutely need to be at the the workplace for the for the functioning of the either the, you know, whatever the function of that of that workplace looks like. We need to identify, is there, are there peoples who can still work from home just to reduce their exposure? When we talk about substitution, we're also talking about can, we're not really talking about substituting COVID-19. But we want you just to think about substitution in terms of can dangerous products that we use, like biological, chemical products, can they be substituted for products to not create a hazard? So a lot of places are using bleach solutions for disinfecting. Well, we know that bleach is actually very, very caustic to surfaces and actually it's very caustic to humans as well. So we have to look at, are there products out there that kill the SARS-CoV-2 virus that are less harmful or that are that are not harmful for for the workers who are required to use them? Because there's going to be an uptick, obviously, in cleaning and disinfecting in the workplace. And with that uptick of cleaning and disinfecting, we want to make sure that we're not using any kind of products that are going to create their own kind of hazard. Now we're going to look at engineering controls. And what that means is isolating the hazard or designing equipment and processes to reduce the source of exposure. So when we talk about engineering controls, we usually talk about physical barriers or machinery guards or equipment design. But we can still think about, how can we set up barriers in the workplace to limit peoples who are who are cannot necessarily physically distance? Can we set up some kind of machinery or can we design equipment in the workplace so that we can ensure a physical distancing? And anybody that is required to do any kind of like And anybody that is required to do any kind of like screening? Or talk to members of the public who haven't been screened? Ensure that we can, that there's some kind of barrier that exists. We have to look at ventilation, because ventilation is very important in the control of COVID-19. It's important that rooms have good ventilation. And as we go back to our workplaces, if you're in the school board, make sure that all of your ventilation systems and exhaust fans are, are working. Same's what the, same thing for all the university buildings as well. Ensure that the filters are clean. Make sure that they've been properly serviced, because they probably haven't been either running well. Or they probably just haven't running. And you have to also be mindful of the fact that there might be standing water in some of the HVAC machines. We don't wanna have situations like Legionnaires' disease. There are a lot of things we need to consider as we go back to the workplace. You also want to, I'm just gonna toss in there that if you, if your workplace hasn't been occupied in a long time, it's a good idea to flush the, the water as well. We want to, for screening the client, so screening clients, patients, students before entry to the workplace. If you have a, an effective screening policy in place to ensure that there are, there's a, just a screening process that effectively eliminates the chance that a worker or some other person that is essential to that workplace from entering the workplace that has COVID-19. We want to limit the access to the workplace to single points. To ensure that, that, just so that to ensure that the, the screening process goes through only one place and that there are no other people that are accessing the workplace. I realize if we ever try to open up universities, this is going to be a challenge. But we're gonna have to really start thinking creatively on how we let people or, how we let access happen to our buildings. Limiting suspected or confirmed cases to isolated areas of the workplace. So, i- if there's a chance where you are going to be accepting people in your workplace that, that have either suspected or confirmed cases, want to ensure if that is, is going to happen, that they do not wander through the entire workplace. We want to limit their access within the workplace in, in certain situations where that's going to be required. Administrative controls, and this is how we, it's called changing the way people work. So, we talked earlier about training. We're gonna have to have all kinds of training going forward on the measures and procedures to prevent exposure. There's gonna have to be policies and programs and standard operating procedures in place. We're gonna have to look at self-monitoring for symptoms, and it should be done by staff members at least three times a day. And recognize what are the symptoms to ensure that I don't go to work being sick. We wanna look at shift work, if it's possible, to ensure that we have less people in the workplace. We don't have huge congregations of people at, at the workplace, if possible. We wanna look at social distancing and physical distancing must continue. Look at things like standard break times to ensure that people or staff or students are not congregated into areas all at the same time. And we have to look at hand hygiene, cough etiquette. And if we can establish washrooms for staff only, that is a way to limit exposure as well. And it's not listed here, but as I mentioned earlier, cleaning and disinfecting will have to be increased. Personal protective equipment is the last resort. And, but if PPE is required, if your employer requires you to wear PPE, it should only be used when hazards can be, can't be eliminated or completely controlled by engineering and administrative controls. And if you are required to wear PPE and have never worn it before, you have to be trained in its use and its care. And find out if there's any limitations to it. Is, is there somewhere where the PPE is vulnerable? Can we wear other pieces of equipment to, to, to gap that vulnerability? How to remove it and how to put it on safely? And if you're required to have a fit test for certain things like respirators, ensure that you are getting a fit test. Ensure that the PPE is clean, stored in a convenient location and does not create any hazards like discomfort or heat. And after we're all done, we're gonna have to evaluate to ensure the controls protect workers at the end of the day. So, as mentioned before, this, this, this presentation will be posted. And these are just links that if you're a member of the Joint Health and Safety Committee, that you can access. These are all good resources that have information related to some of the things that we've talked about. Can't go through them all right now because we're running short on time, because we wanna answer some of your questions. So, but like I said, it'll will be posted, you'll have access to the slides. And there'll also be a copy of this, this recording of this presentation that will be available. And we'll move on to questions now. And just remember, just a reminder that we can only deal with questions that apply to the sector generally. We can't really deal with workplace specific issues. And just a caution that we want to ensure that, if you're a member of the committee, that you're having ongoing dialogue with your employer before, you know, things resume in your workplace, because we don't know how it's going to be rolled out. So, as soon as the, we have a sense of what it's going to look like, it's important that the committee get involved to, to ensure that they've been given the opportunity to identify if any hazards exist, that they can be provided with information. And be able to look at that information and to make recommendations, to make improvements. Because it's gonna be an ongoing thing, this, this, this thing for a while. So we're gonna always have to go into that cycle of evaluation to determine that if what we have in place is truly protecting the workers at the end of the day. So we'll move on to questions now, and Felicia, I think is gonna go through the chat bar with us.
Yeah.
And I'll say that you're the, you guys are the chattiest group we've had so far.
Definitely, using emojis and everything, I love it. Okay, uh, let me just scroll here, because that was audio.
Yeah, the PowerPoint will be shared.
Yes, it will be shared. Paul mentioned the documents that were sent out ahead of time. So those are the only additional notes in addition to the webinar. So our first question is, an employer requires you to use or wear, I think, protective equipment. What is an employee wants to wear a mask and are not asked to wear one?
So it, we have to really evaluate, what is the, what is the exposure here? And if the employer, if I'm understanding the question correctly.
And I think there's a follow-up, just for clarity. They, it says, I would like to know if it's okay for the board staff interacting with the, with the public to wear one if they want to.
Yeah, because going forward, it, it's a, it's a strong possibility that there's gonna be a lot of masking going on. Not necessarily to, to protect workers, but mainly to protect everyone else from you. In case you have the, in case you have COVID-19. Now, there's a big distinction in that, because that's called source control. But if the employer's saying, you have to wear this because it is a means of protecting you from exposure to someone who has COVID-19, you're required to wear it. As long, but the considerations all have to be got, there are other considerations have to be taken into, into, into consideration, yeah. So, it's kinda hard to just wrap it all up and say, do you, it's a really hard to, a question to answer, because we don't know what it's going to look like. Certainly, if you are, if you're currently in a situation where you're not able to maintain physical distancing, you're, you should be wearing some kind of PPE, and that includes gloves and a surgical mask. But, we're, we're gonna be following this very closely. And at this time, we, the employers, we're just gonna rely on 252H to ensure that the employer is taking every precaution reasonable and ask if that's, if that's actually being carried through in the workplace.
All right, so our next question is, must the employer accommodate if there's a risk for someone with underlying health conditions, i.e. specific PPE, mask, et cetera? And would the employer at that point then provide masks to ensure proper accommodations for the employer has been, the employee, sorry, has been addressed? So, yes, the employer, the employer's obligation to accommodate a worker, regardless if it's COVID-19, still stands? If they have underlying issues that perhaps the required PPE that they're recommending provides another hazard for them, then the employer has to look at other accommodations that are appropriate in the circumstances in order to protect that, that person's health and safety. So, it may be that that person may have to be reassigned or put in another location of the building temporarily. It can look like very many different ways, but they still do have to accommodate folks that there's a risk if they have underlying conditions. I will caution you that I know for workplaces that have been open and this piece has come up, the employer hasn't really turned their mind and explored every other precaution that they could put in place and, and a reasonable measure that they could put, put in place rather than just applying this person with PPE that they can't wear and just sending them home without pay. Not with, well, they could apply through the federal programs that they have, but they've sent them home and, and pretty much temporarily let them off. So you do wanna make sure as a health and safety representative or a committee member that you're holding the employer accountable to really exercising that accommodation and looking at every possible avenue rather than affecting someone's income. Paul, did you have something to add?
No, that's kinda, that's kinda, it, it speaks a lot to that. We don't, the first thing we don't wanna think about is PPE. Why don't you think about, we don't wanna look at like isolation or really reducing a person's exposure to COVID-19 in the workplace and what that looks like. It's gonna be on a case-by-case basis.
So then we have, I don't know if that's a... Okay, so that, that's just a comment, comment, comment. That's a comment. Scrolling. Are monthly workplace inspections still required for workplaces with limited staff working during the transition to full employment?
Yeah, so, we are going to urge you that inspections still happen at your workplace. If you have particular buildings that no one is working in right now, it's going to be, it's gonna be tough to justify why that workplace needs to be inspected, except we don't know when everyone's gonna be going back to work. Therefore, we, we don't wanna be a situation where it's June 1st and the employer says, we don't have to inspect the building because no one's gonna be there. But we don't know, we don't know what's gonna happen there two or three weeks. There might actually be people in the building. We wanna make sure that inspection is happening. Now, so what we're saying is, we want those inspections to occur if there are workers still working in those work locations. And the, the ministry might be taking a different view. They might be saying that there has to be at least five people. And we might actually lose that case if we go to the board and there's not more than five workers in the workplace. We might lose that, that argument. However, then we're not gonna tell the employers that. We're gonna say that if there are workers working, the workplace needs to continue to be inspected. And we're asking that the, the, the member of the committee that does need to inspect that workplace is given the opportunity to inspect that workplace and given, if they're required to wear PPE, that they be given, given the, the right amount of PPE depending on the circumstances. It, it's just a principle that we're, we're holding firm to.
Right, because if, 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 if it affects one or it could potentially harm or endanger one person, it affects all, right?
Yeah, I believe also, I think TDSB, I think that, I'm not sure, I don't think it was 4400. I'm not sure who, but I believe one of the Toronto School Boards, either Catholic or, or the public board, was able to get orders on this. But a lot, it was public. So, a, a lot of it depends on what your terms of reference might be saying. So, we keep pushing on it, keep pushing back on that.
Uh, great information there, okay. Do you both go to radio school for silky smooth voices? No, Matthew. Thank you though, glad that we sound so nice. You spoke about inspections. Since schools have been closed, okay, I think that, that, so Paul did answer this question. They're just asking about, there are very few workers in the building at a time. Is a worker required to do inspections and have joint safety meetings? So, Paul didn't speak to the, the meeting piece, so that's why I'm just repeating those questions.
Yeah, yeah, so meetings, yes, we think they should be taking place because the employer is starting, is right now probably starting to develop policies and procedures on what they, what the return to work is gonna look like. So, we would, we would think, and there are workers who are working from home. These are, there's, workers are still working. So we're urging that this, that there has been no, the Ministry of Labor hasn't said that, oh, just because you're in a, we're in a pandemic, the, the act stops. No, we wanna continue to make sure that this is still going on, because we can make the argument that workers are still working. And there's been no suspension of the act. It, it's like the school boards, it's like the schools during the summer. Workplaces are still inspected during the summer, even though there's a limited number of workers who are there.
And, and like Paul said earlier, we are encouraging you folks, for the ones that are doing a full opening, to, to really, as a health and safety committee or, or co-chair or health and safety representative, to contact, to have a, a meeting or a conver, a meeting with your employer in advance to talk about these things and to look at all the things that we discussed in the webinar today. Okay, how do we ensure that PPE is actually effective against, effective against PPE?
Yeah.
I.e. home ma-, home mask versus medical grade mask?
Yeah, so, medical grade masks or respirators can be used as personal protective equipment. In a sense that it's going to protect, if you're wearing a surgical mask, it's gonna protect you from large droplets. When you wear a face cloth or a homemade mask, that is not going to filter out very much. And what it only does is basically, it's like wearing a Kleenex on your face. Or sneezing into your arm. That's the kind of protection level that you're going to get from it. So, we have to ask ourselves, why is the worker wearing this? If it's to protect others from exposure, that's one thing. If it's, if it's to protect the worker, that's personal protective equipment. And if you are going to be in proximity for extended period of times with people who haven't been screened or with people who are suspected or confirmed cases of COVID-19, then you should have the appropriate PPE, which would start, start with masks and gloves.
What is the basis of the screen you spoke of?
The screening, so the, I, I believe that's what they're speaking about, is the screening process. Is that it's, it's a way to identify if someone has been in contact with someone with COVID-19. That that person, find out if that person is symptomatic. And it's the, it's the ability to limit or to ensure that no one enters the, the workplace that has a, a, a good chance or likely chance of having the, the disease itself. And it is only one, one way, it's one of many mechanisms that you can put in place to protect workers. With, like I said, it's, it's one control that's part of a larger system of controls to limit access to the workplace.
And there is a checklist that, that, of, of screening questions that can be asked, that's found on the ministry website. And I, I believe it's in our Q and As as well, right, Paul?
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah. Okay, so, should workers be informed of COVID-19 cases in the workplace, signs on the doors?
Yeah, so signage is gonna be very important. And it's, if, if we roll back to work, say in September, and we're still dealing with waves of, of outbreaks, or, you know, we're gonna have to ensure that there's proper communication that is given to parents, children, contractors, essential visitors, agencies, anyone who shows up at your, at, at your workplace is going to, it's gonna have to be informed of what is the rules of the, what's the rules at the workplace for COVID-19? What is the expectation, what we, what do, what do we want people to follow? And that, that communication piece is gonna have to be ahead of time. And everyone's gonna be, have to be aware of it, and everyone's gonna have to follow it. To ensure that we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be burdening public health and we're not gonna be burdening the public health system. And that is the whole idea, if, if we're ever gonna go back to work, is that everyone has to be on board with this, these kinds of rules as we go forward. Because it's the law. Workers have to be protected in the workplace, and the employer is to take every precaution reasonable.
And for clarity, it's, it's the, they should be informed of the cases, that there's cases present in the workplace, not who specifically.
Yeah.
Okay, how often will touch surfaces, devices, desktops, chalkboards, et cetera, knobs, be sanitized given the current crisis?
That's, that's a very good question. As often as necessary, so.
Yeah, as often as necessary as possible.
If you, yeah, and it's gonna depend on what surface it is. And if you're looking at, i- if, if we're looking at a, a university classroom that is on the fifth floor, that is, you know, once a day versus a JK classroom.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna have to ident, and, and when we talked about identification earlier, Felicia was talking about a floor plan. Well, let's get out, let's get on a map of the building. Well, let's get out, let's get on a map of the buildings and say, here are our target zones, here are our hot zones, and here's where we're going to concentrate. And what is that? How often are we going to do that? And the employer is probably going to have to uptick their, their personnel for, for, for cleaning and disinfecting going forward. Because it's going to be, it is a necessary control. It's, like I said, that's just one control. So like I said, it's going to be a multiple, multiple layers of controls that are going to have to be in place. And what that looks like, I would say that you're probably in the best position to make that recommendation that it should be every two hours, every four hours, or every six hours.
Okay, just scrolling through lots of nice comments. Thanks, folks. Glad you're enjoying it. What about the hazard the inspector presents to the workplace?
That, that, okay, at first I thought you were talking about...
Yeah, me too. I was like, who?
So if you, if you do inspections, you should be provided the necessary personal protective equipment to protect, to, to do your inspection. And if you're working in universities, you're going to probably have a little bit more challenging situations based on whatever laboratory or room or chemical storage place that you're going to walk into. You might need extra levels of PPE. You're going to have to ensure that ventilation systems are working. If you are, if you're inspecting a workplace and you don't have, or if you're going to be faced with a hazard yourself, obviously, you have the right to, to not go into that room and to refuse unsafe work or bring it to the attention of your supervisor if necessary that a hazard exists and that it has to be controlled.
Okay, thanks. So we're going to go through a few more questions. We're going to try and get to all of them. We have, do inspections need to be done if currently inspecting annually? So that may sound like it's a multi-site, but...
Yeah, well, go to your terms of reference. And if you, if you don't think, you're going to have to be bound to whatever your terms of reference say through our multi-site. However, you can, you know, make recommendations that because of the exceptional circumstances that we're in, and these are, that is your argument. We are in exceptional, unprecedented times. Therefore, wouldn't it be prudent upon the committee to do more inspections, to be more involved, to have more meetings? Because they are the best placed in the workplace to identify hazards and make those recommendations.
With the limited staff in the building, the trained worker rep may not be one of the staff that are working. What can we do to continue inspections if that is the case?
Yeah, that is a, that's a, it's, it's a good question because we, the, your terms of reference or whatever your agreement is in your workplace, the person who's a member of the committee is the one who does the inspection. It, it generally cannot be delegated to someone else.
Yeah, and I, I got this question in another sector. And, and what we really looked at is that if the trained worker may not be physically at the workplace but still employed, then the expectation is that that person would come in and to do the inspection.
Yeah. It, it, it's, it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, but I'm just going to say that the, it should not be delegated to another person.
Person, no.
And if, if the person, and I know the act says that the preference is given to the certified rep person, but a, a worker who's been on the committee, it's the committee who decides who does the inspections. It's, 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 it's them who does, who designate it. And like I said, it shouldn't be transferred. The only time I think we were advocating for for someone else to do it was when the, the discussions around when the teachers were going to go on, or when teachers were on strike. If they were going to have a prolonged strike, the, the, the workplace still needed to be inspected. And in that situation, the employer would be allowed to delegate a, a worker member who was not necessarily the, the one who was supposed to do the inspection to, to in fact do that inspection in that situation.
Perhaps checking if there's an alternative, well, because usually, well, sometimes you want to make sure that there is an alternative in, in the event that that person can't make it for whatever reason that day.
Yeah. So if, if you have any questions, please go, talk to your national rep or to your local and see if we can find some solutions.
What about the hazard? Oh, no, we already got that one. So our Joint Health and Safety made, I don't know if this is a question, but our Joint Health and Safety made a recommendation to ensure monthly inspections, and we give the inspection powers to the custodians on the site as inspectors with training. As not all custodians are on the site, based reps in our board to reduce the number of people on site. This is an idea. Thanks, Michelle. When ready, where can we find the revised news poli, sorry, when ready, when can we find the revised new policies to accommodate COVID-19's pandemic in the school environment?
Ask your employer.
Yeah, ask your employer. Yeah, wherever they typically put occupational health and safety policies is where it should be, and it, it should be accessible for folks to, to access it.
We, we talked earlier about information and reports. This is an information report that if, if, if it talks about worker safety, it's, it's, it's of the Joint Health and Safety Committee's business.
This is new. Schools are not open yet. Will Health and Safety create a database where we can submit how workplaces are opening? What is working well, what is not? Resources for Health and Safety Representatives. That's a good idea.
That's a good idea for, if you are a member of the school board. I think that's something that maybe OSBCU can handle or the university sector as well. It'd be a good idea to collect that kind of information.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, looks like last question. What about, oh, I think...
We'll quickly get to the last two.
I think, yeah, I don't know if, okay, yeah. What about the hazard inspectors represent to the workplace or the workplace to the inspector in light of COVID? I think we addressed that, right?
I think so.
I think you spoke to that, Paul. Yeah. Okay. And should COVID-19 be added to the, to the list, communicable diseases where doctors note is required to return to school slash workplace, much like measles, chickenpox, mumps, scarlet disease, children diseases, et cetera?
Yeah. I, we're, right now, in the long-term care and the healthcare and social services, anywhere they're, they're providing kind of care right now, and workers either become symptomatic or develop COVID-19, the ministry has a couple of guidelines on around that. What we're saying is 14 days since you tossed it positive or 14 days since the onset of symptoms and you're not experiencing symptoms anymore is a, is a, is a safe, a relatively safe standard that we're holding on.
Yeah.
There are some employers that think it could be less than that. We have public health units who are saying less than that, if you can believe. However, let's be prudent here. Let's, let's be smart about what we're doing here. Let's ensure that everyone is completely free and is not, is not going to transmit the virus when they come back to work. That is something that we can certainly push on a political level to try and get that changed for, to ensure that our public health system is protected.
Awesome. So thank you, folks, for joining. I hope you folks found this information useful and, and relevant today, and go get them. Paul, any last words?
No, please be safe and just, just be creative out there because we're all going to have to get through this together.
Absolutely. Stay safe, everyone.